Conduct of business.
Item 6A, hold a public hearing, waive first reading, and introduce an ordinance and resolution adding Chapter 12.260 to Title 12 zoning of the San Bruno Municipal Code establishing development impact fees.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the City Council. My name is Keith DiMartini. I'm the city's finance director, and it's my pleasure to present an overview of the Development Impact Fee Program and the first reading of the ordinance and resolution before you this evening. So here's the agenda for the presentation today. Give you a brief objective. I'll provide a brief overview of the Development Impact Fee Program. A lot of this was covered at the first public hearing on December 11th of 2018 as well. We'll talk about what the maximum allowable impact fees are by land use category as described in the NEXUS study that was produced for this project. And then we will compare the maximum allowable fees with the staff recommended fee levels. We'll talk about the repealing of the current park dedication and in lieu fee. A brief overview of the ordinance and resolution before you. Talk about next steps and tonight's action, and we'd be happy to take any questions that you might have. So just an overview of the objective of this evening is this is the public hearing to waive the first reading and introduce an ordinance adding Chapter 12.260 to Title 12 of the San Bruno Municipal Code establishing development impact fees. So just some brief overview. An impact fee is a one-time fee on new development to pay for new infrastructure improvements required to serve growth. Revenues collected are used to pay for public facilities and infrastructure needed to accommodate the growth in the city for many years to come. Developers pay impact fees. Fees are assessed when building permit applications are submitted, and they are due upon the building permit issuance. The fees are subject to a NEXUS study calculation, which requires a reasonable relationship between a government fee and the purpose of its use. Impact fees are set and are to be adopted by the City Council. As noted in the last bullet, the fees themselves do not authorize new development projects. All projects will still be required to receive any planning entitlements or sequel review and any mitigation of project-specific impacts, as is the current process for the city. There are many rules governing how fees are to be used. They can only be used for capital, facility, and infrastructure costs. They cannot be used to fund operations. Fees can only fund new development's fair share of the total project's cost based on the rational nexus documented in the NEXUS study. In other words, impact fees cannot be used to fund 100% of the costs of the city's capital needs. The law requires that the City Council approves impact fees and the purpose of its use, the relationship between the need for facilities and new development, and the proportional costs of the facilities attributable to the growth. And there is an annual reporting requirement. It's called the AB 1600 reporting requirement, and that will continue to be reported to City Council annually. And the NEXUS study, it's recommended to be updated at least once every five years to sort of rebase line the projects that are assumed in the NEXUS itself. There are many economic considerations with these fees. They do add to the cost of new construction, and they could affect new development penciling. The fees do create value in the long run, however, as they fund necessary infrastructure and improvements that support the new development and ultimately improve the quality of life of the city's residents and people that visit. It's important to note that the fees do not directly influence real estate prices. The market forces determine the prices. And it's also noteworthy that most cities in the Bay Area have already adopted fairly robust, comprehensive development impact fee programs already. Fees of other nearby cities were taken into consideration by staff at a policy level when setting the staff recommended fee levels. Development in those cities continues to occur, and impact fee revenues go to fund critical municipal infrastructure improvements in those cities that would not be funded otherwise. As mentioned, the fees were developed based on the capital facility needs of the city in order to meet the additional development demand. You'll see a list of the major capital and facility projects described in the NEXUS study here on this slide that will be partially funded with the development impact fee revenues that will be generated over time. As presented on December 11th, the city contracted with EPS to prepare a NEXUS study. Jason Moody, the principal at EPS, is here with us this evening and has worked extensively on this project from its inception. The Development Impact Fee NEXUS study calculates a maximum allowable fee for community facilities, public safety, general government, transportation, and utility improvements. Fees are proposed to be assessed on the residential development projects, assessed for single-family and multifamily dwellings per unit, and for non-residential development projects for office, industrial, retail, and hotel. That's calculated and assessed per square footage. Since we presented to you on December 11th, there were a handful of changes that the consultant team and the city team worked on based on feedback received from City Council. The change in persons per household assumption to separate out single and multifamily, as requested by City Council, has been included in this version here. And then there are a number of other assumptions that had been, had some minor tweaks to them in the NEXUS study, including some generation factors to separate out single and family, some land value assumption updates. We included an emergency response planning and exercise project. So there are a number of additional updates that went into the NEXUS study. And just a reminder that the existing development impact fees for affordable housing will continue, proposed to be continued, and they're not summarized on this slide. That's an existing impact fee that will continue. So it's important to note that the actual fee revenue will depend on both the level and the type of growth that occurs in the city over time. The high-level revenue estimate on this slide here, it assumes that there's more retail development, followed by office and hotel respectively. It also assumes a higher proportion of single-family development relative to the low estimate. Both of these estimates assume a similar level of hotel development. So again, many assumptions into the revenue projection, which is why we provided a range on this slide. And although the NEXUS allows for the maximum allowable fee, the City Council can adopt an ordinance for the fees below the maximum allowable if you choose to do so. Staff is recommending the development fee levels based on policy and other city program information that we presented back on December 11th. For single-family residential, industrial, retail, and hotel, staff are recommending reducing the fee from the maximum allowable level to the average of cities in San Mateo County. We believe that this would not unduly burden new development. It's important to note that the impact fee is applicable to construction of new residential units and would not be paid by the typical homeowner, who would merely be renovating or adding on to their existing home. For multifamily residential and for office, we are recommending the maximum allowable fee in the NEXUS study. For multifamily, the maximum allowable fee is below the average of cities in San Mateo County, which is why we want to recommend the maximum allowable. And then for office development, office development imposes a significant strain on the city's infrastructure, and impact fees will be a vital funding source to ensure that community, public safety, general government, transportation, and utility capital facility revenues are collected in order to maintain and enhance these facilities to support the growth of the office development. And the investment of this infrastructure will enhance the quality of life in those key commercial corridors. As I mentioned earlier, the impact fee ordinance is proposed to repeal Section 12.44.140 of the city's municipal code in its entirety. This section is more commonly known as the Quimby Act fee, and it's a parkland dedication requirement that is applicable only to certain land subdivisions and is authorized by state law. Developers usually fulfill their park dedication requirements by paying an in lieu fee that can be used to purchase and fund park improvements elsewhere. This was a source of funding for the acquisition of the Florida Park. But the city historically has not seen a large number of residential subdivisions in recent years, so the city has not collected a lot of fees for Park and Lou in recent years. There are challenges to the city's current ordinance, and it may have contributed to being a barrier to development of residential ownership units in the city. The current ordinance has a high standard. The fee is potentially part of the reason why the city has not seen residential development of ownership units, but rather rental units since the fee does not apply to rental. A clearly defined community facilities development impact fee for all types of residential development with a clearly defined value will meet the city's interest to ensure that there is funding for parkland acquisitions and additional facility improvements to serve all new development going forward. So moving on to some highlights of the ordinance and the resolution before you. Developers are required to pay the development impact fees prior to the issuance of the building permit. The city shall not issue a building permit for a development project unless the fees have been paid. There is a credit available to developers that involves the demolition of an existing structure and its replacement with a new structure. The developer is entitled to credits against those fees. In order to qualify for a credit, the developer must demonstrate that the building was either occupied by a resident or a business during six of the 12 months prior to the date of a complete building permit application. The credit will be calculated for the fee that would have been charged for the development of the structure being demolished. As I mentioned earlier, we will continue to comply with the annual AB 1600 report, including all of the activities of new fee revenue coming in under the new comprehensive fee program and how the city expends those funds. And then finally, I mentioned earlier, we will plan to adhere to updating the NEXUS study at least once every five years, as I mentioned earlier. So some additional items that are noteworthy here. The ordinance does have an appeals process built into it. If the applicant believes that one or more of the fees that was calculated was calculated incorrectly by the city, they can submit an appeal to the city manager, and the city manager has 30 days to respond. The ordinance also includes an annual inflationary adjustment. It really is designed so that the fee itself keeps pace with the cost of doing construction. The fees will be indexed annually, and it will be proposed to City Council during the annual budget process for the indexed new fees to be effective on July 1st, the beginning of the fiscal year. At the time that the Development Impact Fee ordinance is presented, there will be a handful of development projects with submitted planning entitlement applications with the city. The impact fees will not be assessed on a development project if an application for the project has been deemed complete by the city no later than May 1st, 2019, and the city and the developer of the development project enter into a development agreement or another negotiated contract with the city for the project on or before August 1st, 2019. There are normally no exceptions for pipeline projects that are not deemed complete by the effective date of the fees. However, the city is responding to concerns that we've received that have been raised by various applicants of major projects, that these fees are a significant unanticipated project expense to them. We've developed a timeline that ensures that the city has time to negotiate agreements with the developers while we continue to process these pipeline applications. We're also proposing a reduction to accessory dwelling unit projects. They're required to pay various permit and utility connection fees as it is today, and the additional fees are posing a large increase of permit fees in total for seeing these ADU projects through to approval. The size of the ADUs is limited to 640 square feet in the zoning code, and they're typically about 50%, about half of the size of a multifamily unit, with about half of the persons per unit. So the proposed ordinance stipulates that ADUs are subject to 50% of the fee for the multifamily residential dwelling unit to reduce the permitting fee burden on those projects. And then the last note here is about procedures. This will be a brand-new program for the city, so it will require us to create policies and procedures. It will require us to develop some training materials for staff that are involved with calculating the fee, the staff in finance for the accounting treatment of the fees, the reporting, updating the master fee schedule. We'll be including fee activity during our budget process, so there are quite a number of things that it will take for the city to administer this program once the ordinance has been adopted by the City Council. So just moving on to next steps here. As I mentioned earlier, staff has been working with EPS for a couple of years now on developing all of the assumptions and the technical studies that go into the NEXUS study. We had the first public meeting on December 11th, 2018, as I mentioned earlier, and tonight before you is the first reading of the Impact Fee Ordinance and the Resolution. The second reading is scheduled for the next City Council meeting on February 26th, and if council decides to move forward to adopt the ordinance at that time, the fees will take effect 60 days after the ordinance is adopted. So we would like to have the effective date be at the first of the month, so that is looking as May 1st, 2019, when the fees would take effect. In preparation for this meeting tonight, we, staff, did reach out to 21 developers that have proposed or current or recently completed projects with the city and the Building Industry Association on November 19th, and then we reached out to them again on January 29th to let them know that the first reading will be tonight before City Council. We really wanted to make sure that the city's development community was well-informed about our plans to move forward. And the city clerk also published the public notice requirements on February 1st and February 7th. So just to wrap up, our request tonight is to waive the first reading and introduce the ordinance adding Chapter 12.260 to Title 12 of the San Bruno Municipal Code establishing development impact fees. That concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Okay. Does council have any initial questions for the director? Because this is a public hearing, so I know we do have some speaker cards.
Yes. Get my questions out, please. One question I had was just in the timing. It seems like we're going to wait almost, you know, till the end of the year, or at least the end of the summer before this would kick in. Any reason why we wouldn't want to do it sooner? It seems like we're already a little late to the party.
Thank you for your question. There is a new fee ordinance, I believe, requires a 60-day requirement before the new fees take effect. And so we cannot implement the new program and start assessing and charging the fees any earlier than 60 days after the ordinance is adopted by the City Council.
As a piggyback to that, while that is true, for pipeline projects, there are two dates. There's the deemed complete by May 1st and having entered into a development agreement or some other agreement with the city by August 1st. It is likely that the ordinance will have taken effect for other projects that didn't meet that first May deadline before August 1st. And so that May to August deadline is essentially allowing us time to negotiate with the pipeline projects. It's not stopping the implementation of the ordinance or making that 60-day time period longer.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Also related to the Park and Lou portion of this, and I try to read through the NEXUS report and understand all the different components, how you break it down. It's really, actually very interesting how you accommodate for all these different things. But I'm wondering, are there going to be any more restrictions now on those funds than we had? With the Park and Lou, it seemed like we could just kind of hold those funds indefinitely, and then when an appropriate project came up, we were able to assign it. Now that we're actually considering very specific things and accounting for those and allocating portions of things based on employees and how many residents, how many units, are we going to have more restrictions then on how we can use those funds?
I'll ask Jason Moody, our consultant from EPS, to answer that question.
The actually Impact Fee Program does identify the projects for which the park funds can be used for, and it's based on a service standard, which says, you know, a number of acres per thousand. So as long as you're investing in parks and you're meeting that service standard, you can do that. There's other specific elements as well. Also, in many ways, the Impact Fee Program is a little more flexible because the Quimby fee is really for land, and then the capital facilities can be used for land and improvement. So it gives you a little more flexibility to use it for land improvements. I would also add that you do update the impact fee every five years so that you can kind of take a look at the projects that you had listed, and if some of them need to come in or out, you can do that and still keep the money you've collected and reorient it to the new project. So it's actually not that inflexible. It does give you a fair amount of flexibility in the time that parks should do.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Oh, the other, last question I had was just regarding the sections where staff is recommending that we not go to the maximum. Would it hurt us to just go for the maximum and then use that as a negotiation point with each development where if they could somehow negotiate down? Or once we set these, is that set in stone?
Once you set it, that will be the fee that every developer would pay. I do want to correct one thing that Keith said. We didn't base our recommendation off of all of the cities in San Mateo County. We based it off of the peer cities that we looked at in San Mateo County, which was largely reflective of our neighboring cities with some others that have development impact fees.
Okay. All right. Thank you. That was it.
Laura, anything for now? Before public hearing? Marty, before public hearing?
Sure. Thank you for that complicated report. It's very thorough. I do appreciate that the inflation is already in there, so it makes it kind of automatic, so we just keep on moving forward. Two things that I wasn't exactly clear on, this credit development. Can you give me an example of what that range of the credit would be? I just not really, I just didn't get that.
So just sort of conceptually, if there is a retail building on a lot that is going to be redeveloped with another retail building but much bigger, let's say the retail building that's being demolished is 20,000 square feet, and the new retail development's going to be 100,000 square feet, well, the fee that gets calculated will be reduced by the fee of the 20,000-square-foot unit. So it's proportionally reduced by the use that's on the existing lot that's currently there.
Okay. My other question's for our city manager in that there is an appeal process. So if a developer doesn't like the fees, they appeal to the city manager. City manager says yea or nay, and then the project comes to the council with the understanding that the city manager approved or denied the appeal? Just for the process, to understand how that works.
The process is that the city manager's decision is binding. It is not to say whether the fee applies. It is an appeal based on the calculation method. So the typical example is to use Keith's example. If the developer is questioning the city's calculation of existing square footage or our basis for calculating the fee, the city manager would not have discretion to change the fee amount or waive the fee for the development. With your adoption, these fees will apply to all projects that they're subject to.
And just so I'm aware, or maybe the public's aware, of the handful of projects that are on the cusp of this being, impacting them, I was wondering if you could possibly share those, just so that we're aware of it.
The two most significant ones are the Mills Park development, and that is the development along El Camino Real, boarded by Canes and San Bruno Ave, and a nine-unit residential development on Sylvan Avenue.
There may be one other, which is why Darcy, our Community Development Director, has come up.
Hi. Yes. Darcy Smith, Community and Economic Development Director. So there's just a few more, and we anticipate those will not be deemed complete by May 30th or May 1st, but you just never know. Applications can move very fast, so I just want to mention those in full disclosure. Glenview Terrace is a 29-unit single-family project that we've been working on since middle of 2016 in various stages, and it was on hold for a while, but it's since now revived itself. There's a 34-room hotel at 160 El Camino Real that was just submitted in March, and we doubt will be complete, but I, again, just want to mention it. And then we have a 24-unit residential project at 271 El Camino Real, the Old Lees Buffet. We thought those were unlikely, but those are the biggest projects.
So the two that I mentioned are the two that we are actively negotiating with, and those are the two that will likely fall between that window of being deemed complete by May 1st and likely to have entered into an agreement by August 1st.
Thank you.
Okay. This is a public hearing. You can call the speakers, please.
Suresh Gandhi.
So, Honorable Mayor and members of the City Council, my name is Suresh Gandhi, and my business address is 501 Eastern Avenue. I'm here before you today particularly to discuss my view and concerns about the proposed impact fee ordinance that you're considering. First of all, I agree with the general concept. The city needs to do long-term planning and provide for all the infrastructure or anything that need goes with the development. But what I don't agree with that is the current project which are in pipeline, as far as I understand, that's the definition city gives, our project is in pipeline. I don't know whether that's a pipeline or not. We have already filed all our papers for the application that's required by the city. We have done all the reports that require for the permit. We have paid all the fees that's required so far for this process, and as far as we are concerned, we have an official letter from City of San Bruno that our project is deemed complete. In my view, this qualifies for exemption right away. The fact that interpretation city making differently is questionable. Reason for that, the project is not complete because not us, it's because the city. City has not done their homework. They are busy. They probably don't have staff, and that's why the progress is not done. On August 31st, somewhere in August, this letter was given to me from the city that we complied with everything. On August 11th, we had Architectural Review Committee that approved our project and recommended to send it to the Planning Commission for the further review. I have several letters and emails to the city. When are you going to bring this to the City Council or the Planning Commission? We still don't get any answer, and that's the reason we are here. Now, remember, this project is basically, we are developing under the CBD zoning. This law was passed in 2014, and we are in 2019. We are five years here, and still the city has not upgraded the zoning, and that is why we are in this bad situation. And when I say bad situation, this procedure, I don't know you know or not, but I'm with the city for more than two years. This is the worst nightmare experience that I have as a developer. I did 30 developments all over California. This is the worst experience I'm having. Reason for that, because this zoning requires that you have to go through two steps. You have to pre-approval, and then you have to go to the approval. That costs more money, time, everything adds up, you know? And it has taken time. Before I bought this building, this building was sitting empty for 10 years. It has been really a shame on the city because I saw there is a handicap, I mean, there is homeless people going in there. It's such a bad situation. People are not maintaining nothing like that. I took up upon me and met the city, and I said, I would like to develop this. upon me and met the city, and I said, I would like to develop this. Before I bought it, would you be willing to that? And the city said, yes, we would like to work with you. And that's what I bought it. And I put my investment into that, my hard-earned money, I put into that to develop this project, to provide the needed housing for the city. And here I am, still after two years, I don't have any permit, I don't have any entitlement. I can even, city is asking me, give me schedule when you're going to do the work. I said, but give me permit first before I can do it. They're asking me to give you later, when you start construction, where do these, where do?
Mr. Gandhi, if you could conclude your comments.
Sorry?
If you can start to conclude your comments, you've exceeded your time.
Okay. So anyway, my concern here is it should not apply to this. This is the ninth innings of the game. You cannot change the law. It's not, it's not a question of fairness, but I think it's unethical for the city. It will go negatively for any project the city, somebody wants to do it. Even United State Government, they cannot change the law on December 30th or 30th and say, okay, any transaction you did in last year, we are going to tax you at the new rate. They cannot do that. No, sir. It's unconstitutional. So anything the city wants to do at this rate is not good. The last thing I want to do
Quickly, please, Mr. Gandhi.
Sorry?
Quickly, please.
Okay, yeah, sure. Can I get Alan's two minutes' time and conclude then?
No. Your time has exceeded, and I'm being more than gracious because I understand you're.
So you want me to write to the city and do that way? Is that what you want?
No, sir. It's, you have three minutes to speak and I've allowed to go almost four minutes, Mr. Gandhi. Mr. Gandhi, everybody, every speaker has a time. So I'm trying to be fair to everybody equally.
I wanted to make my point as far as what I'm asking you. So maybe it will be helpful. So you have two timelines. You are mentioning here that any project that's done by May 31st and then the August deadline, you know, and that's very cumbersome. Make it one deadline. Give enough time for people to finish the process so they have a chance to do what they want to do. And I think that's all it is. That's my request.
Thank you for your comments.
Andy Mason.
Thank you. Andy Mason, Cherry Avenue. Overall, I agree with, hello, how's it going? Honorable mayor and council, it's a pleasure to speak here tonight. Overall, I agree with staff's recommendation about the fee schedule. I think that's long overdue. I have five major points I want to bring up about the parks designation. One, I think it's be really behoove staff as well as the council to look into. One, what's the original thought behind the original parks designation? I think open space and parks, those are all very broader social issues we should look into. Two, I want to see how this actually relates to the city's general plan in terms of open space and park land use. That's whenever we change an ordinance or whatnot, we have to make sure it aligns with the general plan. I think that's really important, the way that's worded currently about open space. Three, in the interest of current expediency of trying to push capital projects, I understand we want to allow developers to move into San Bruno and push forward on that. But that parks designation is really something that requires almost a study session or really thoughtful deliberation as a community. And four, it's not so much about the next five to 10 years look like, it's next 50 or 100 years of open space, parks, parkland. It's a larger social picture. So I'm just asking you to look into this, and thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Someone left their phone here.
Oh, I think it's Mr. Gandhi's. Thank you, Mr. Mason.
Okay, were there any other speakers on this? No other speaker cards? All right, then I'm going to go ahead and we're going to take action and close the public hearing. So this is your last opportunity. If not, action?
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, 5-0. Did staff want to at all discuss or respond to any of our speaker comments or initial counsel, or you want to go back to counsel?
I think we should go back to counsel, and we will respond to questions.
Okay. Counsel, follow-up questions or questions to staff?
I don't have a question per se. I think there seems to be a lot of confusion about what the Park and Lou fee, if we do away with the Park and Lou fee, what is taking its place? So could you clarify that? And that's my first one.
Sure. I'll have Keith go into the mechanics in a little bit. I think it's important to note that the current Quimby fee did not apply to ownership units. It only, I'm sorry, did not apply to rental units. It only applied to ownership units. It's also important to note that the development impact fee calculation includes park improvements. And so we do not want both fees on the books for, because we do not want to be double-charged in development. And so we looked at this carefully with staff and with outside counsel and decided that the most appropriate method was to have one clear development impact fee versus the development impact fee calculation not including parks and having our somewhat challenging existing Quimby fee be what is charged on, be the revenue recruitment mechanism for parkland because it only includes rental units. In addition, I think it's important that there be a clear understanding that there will be money with impact fees for parkland. So what, the biggest hurdle that we have with the DIF is that there's an annual reporting requirement that the Quimby fee did not have. And so, yes, we will have to do some annual reporting, but we will still be able to use that money for both infrastructure and land purchase, whereas with the Quimby fee, it could only be used for the land acquisition, not the infrastructure.
This is Keith. I really don't have more to add other than that, but just to reiterate, the money that we would have collected with the Park and Lou fee will now be collected using the community facilities fee. So we cannot double count. So we have to, we are planning to repeal the Quimby fee, and what's taking its place and then some is the community facilities fee.
Okay. And just to be clear for everyone, this also broadens who we collect the fee from. So before it was you could only collect it from owner-owned properties, and this one you can collect it from owner and rental.
Yeah. And we are collecting it on both residential and non-residential projects as well.
Okay. So we're broadening our base of who we collect it from. So subsequently, we'll get more money. And I think it's also important to realize, we've only added one park, we've only purchased land, and we haven't added the park yet. We've only purchased the land for one park, and I think in, I don't even know, 50 years or something. So that's why this is an important change too, so that we can use the money for not just acquiring land, but also for helping with the facilities themselves. So I want to make that comment. Go ahead.
No, no, since you were on that topic, because I think the question may have been as well, is the Park and Lou fees versus community fees or however you term it, is there any difference then between what it can be utilized for, for the open space or for the parks? And I think that might have been one of the questions Mr. Mason had had since we're on that topic.
Yeah. So in the Nexus Study, it does list the various capital and infrastructure facility projects that the city would plan to use the community facilities impact fee revenue for. But I believe, as mentioned earlier, the Park and Lou fee was fairly restrictive in that it can only be used really primarily for the park acquisition, whereas the community facilities impact fee can be used for the park acquisition and facilities and other infrastructure capital needs that the city will need to respond to with the additional development. So it's, and it gives us flexibility to implement and execute on capital projects when the fee that's being collected can be used broadly across those uses.
Thank you.
Since we're on that. Other questions? Marty?
So I appreciate that flexibility, but I was, I'm concerned that we won't, we'll draw down on it too quickly and not have the money for the parks and for the capital improvement, in case we wanted to get property and the capital improvements for parks. So would it be very difficult to split up the community column so that those are two separate items, so that we're retaining the park component?
City manager.
The way the community facilities fee is structured, going back to the PowerPoint, there are a number of different categories. And there are projects that make up each of the category: community, public safety, general government, transportation utilities. The impact fee revenue will go into those specific buckets.
Got it.
And can be used for community facilities in those very specific buckets. The Nexus Study goes into more detail. And so while there is a mechanism to borrow from another pot, it has to be paid back. So for example, if at some point we had only a million dollars of park money generated from the community facilities project, but we had a $1.5 million project, we could borrow from, let's say, the general government portion to do that project with a repayment schedule. So it provides that flexibility, and we are not limited to only the projects that were identified in the Nexus Study. If in a year, a new park project came up that was not envisioned when we completed the study, we could fund that project with the community facility money.
If I may just add to the city manager's response on that question, during the annual budget process, when we present the proposed capital in process, the CIP budget before city council, as in prior years, we will list the proposed capital projects for the upcoming budget cycle and for the five out years going forward. Part of the CIP budget is not only what projects we hope to implement during that time, but what revenue sources we plan to implement the projects with. And so we will very clearly articulate impact fee revenue as a funding source for capital project implementation over the years. So you will see through our budgeting process, through the annual AB 1600 reporting requirement, through those sources, we will make it very transparent how the impact fee money will be spent, based on city council's recommendations and approval.
Good.
So I appreciate all that. I think that's great. It's just that if we have two separate buckets in the community fee, right, and it's great, everything that so far I've heard is great, but if we had two buckets, we make sure that we're not going to drain, we won't drain out the bucket for the parks, that we would always have that money coming in a certain percent of that, and I would feel better with that.
Fair. I think one consideration is that it is ultimately council's decision. And so whether you have that differentiation or not, you can decide whether you want to use a portion on just land acquisition and a portion on the improvements. I also think we don't know specifically what projects we will develop in five or 10 years. And so providing council with maximum flexibility is an important consideration. And so having it in one group that can be used for park facilities may be more beneficial and provide more flexibility to council because you don't know what project you'll be facing in five years. And the land may be inexpensive, but the facilities may cost more. The land may be expensive, and you're doing a dog park, and so you're going to need less money for infrastructure. And so I think flexibility would probably give the city council the most discretion. And at the end of the day, how you spend it would be a decision of the city council.
Laura?
Through the chair. So good presentation, and thank you for a lot of those questions that were answered that, oh, you answered that question. No, you answered that question. But I think what's important, I think, when I keep hearing is that the council has to have some long-term goals. And this is a tough decision today to kind of talk about this. But I know with Park and Lou fees, that you have a bucket, you have money, you know you've got it, and you kind of let it build up. And as things kind of, the future comes out, well, how do we provide something? What's the need in the community? And so I think we'll get there at time. But I also think it's also a revenue source for infrastructure, and that's really a big piece of it. So I appreciate your comments regarding that piece, but I think we'll get there. And I think the council needs to have some long-term visions for us to get there.
I was going to say through the chair. One thing Mr. Gandhi did bring up is about the two-step process. And I think for folks that don't understand what that is or what that is, good or bad, I think needs to be explained, one. And then, two, of course, there was concern and frustration on that process elongating it. And so can we address that?
Sure. I think specific to Mr. Gandhi's case, he did receive a letter from the city in August that said that his application was complete. The application is complete, and we do have what we need and to continue to process that. I think there's a confusion on application being complete and project approved. The project is not approved. The project still needs approval from the Planning Commission and then ultimately the city council. And so it is very much in all of our development projects or applications, a two-step process. A package is submitted, that package is reviewed, that package is deemed complete, and then it goes through the process to be approved at the various levels. Mr. Gandhi's project is in that piece where it's being approved and needs to go to Planning Commission and then city council. The two dates that we have, Mr. Gandhi's project has already met the first date, which is being deemed complete. The second date of August 1st is allowing us time from now to then to complete the conversations that have already begun with Mr. Gandhi for what the, what would have been impact fee revenue payment would be to the city. And so those conversations are happening now and will continue to occur.
And I appreciate that. But when he was saying a two-step process, I think it's initiating the first stage, going into community development, getting kind of a guidance, shall we say, parameters, and then coming back again. And I think that's what he's referencing to the two steps. So is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And so to answer the question, in case folks are listening too, is what was the rationale for going to a two-step process, which can, in some cases maybe not, in some cases could, make it longer?
So Mr. Gandhi's project is in the transit quarters plan. And in the transit quarter, we have a pre-application process. And so he did go through that pre-application process. There are additional requirements and regulations and frankly benefits to properties in the transit corridor. So that pre-application process is an opportunity for the developer or property owner to learn about the intricacies of being in the transit corridor before an application is submitted, which requires a lot of expenditure funds. And so we wanted to have that pre-application to have an avenue to provide clear and consistent information.
Thank you. Other questions or comments, Mike?
One last question. As we were going through the discussion, I was thinking about the culture and arts, I believe, had some component that would, there was some fund that would, that development, I believe, was feeding that, right? And I was wondering if that's being preserved.
That's through the process.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
No, go ahead, Director.
Sorry, yes, that fee will stay. That fee is not proposed to be modified or repealed in any way.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
I guess one last comment in reference to, you know, we hear that as council members a lot about projects in San Bruno and the process that it takes and, you know, the comment that was heard tonight, this is, you know, the worst nightmare as a developer in working with San Bruno. And, you know, before it was this city, before it was that city. But I think the point is, is that we're getting better, and we know it's not right. And I appreciate staff's time to make it better. And so we're getting there. And I think that to Mr. Gandhi and to anybody else in the audience, that is, you know, we're not perfect. We will make mistakes, but we'll make it right. And I think that as, you know, the new leadership in the city hall, we're doing a good job. And I know we'll get there, and I know that things will get better. So, you know, what was is was, and what is going forward will always be the best that we can do. So I appreciate everybody's hard work.
Any other questions from council? Any action? There is a reading.
I was going to ask, can we make a motion to both waive the reading and approve the ordinance and resolution, or do we need to take those separately?
They need to be separate. So we'll first need a motion and a second and an approval to waive the first reading.
Okay. So I will make a motion to waive the first reading.
Second.
Motion made in second to waive the first reading. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
5-0. Now, action on the?
I will then make a motion to approve the ordinance, adding chapter 12.260 to title 12.
Second?
Oh, second. Sorry.
Counselmember Medina?
Aye.
Counselmember Salazar?
Aye.
Vice Mayor O'Connell?
Aye.
Mayor Medina?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you for the comments, Mr. Mason, Mr. Gandhi.